It's 6:30 on this February 9th, 2016. This is the February regular board meeting for the Nikusa School District. Mr. Mahan, could we have Paul O'Lucre or Will Felt, please?
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Reschowski.
He's out.
Mr. Beatty.
President.
Mr. Houston. President. Okay, could we all just stand for the virtual meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Okay, next, Mr. Schmidt will have our virtue card reading for this evening. We have honor. Honor is living by virtues, showing great respect for yourself, other people, and the rules you live by. When you are honorable, you keep your word. You do the right thing regardless of what others are doing. Honor is a path of integrity. You are practicing honor when you guide your life by your virtues and be trusted to keep your promises. Avoid doing things that make you feel ashamed. Respect the rules you want to live by. Do what you believe is right no matter what. Set a good example for others. Affirmation: I am honorable. I keep my agreements and treat others with respect. I care about doing the right thing. Honor. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a public comments. Does anybody wish to make the public comment? Yes?
I just want to say that on Saturday, we had our paper maker, Danemonium, for the student event. Our very first hopefully annual event went really well. We had almost 200 people from the community come through. We sold out of food. We raised almost $200.
$159, though.
Yeah, $159 for the NOW program. So, we were very proud of how well it went for our very first time. So, just wanted to inform the board how great it was. And I appreciate the board members that did come out. Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Beatty, I found Mr. Whitmore. Mr. Spring was there for a minute. It was really, really nice to see you guys come out and support us. So, just want to say we appreciate that.
Any other public comments, can I? Okay, with that, then we'll move ahead. Next on the agenda, we have our student staff presentations. And Mr. Roxer, are you up first? I think so.
I am Philip Roxer. I teach economics up at the high school, two seniors, and I teach U.S. history to juniors. For about a quarter, I don't know if that works. For about, quite honestly, a quarter and a half, 10, 12 weeks, my students have been sidetracking me with a project. We have been doing and looking at the possibility of starting a school store in our building at the high school. So, it actually followed really well with what we would have been doing from the book, and it was a real-world application of what we were looking at. And then, they spent a whole lot of time working on different aspects of it. So, I'm just going to kind of introduce this. I've got a couple of kids here that did some of the work, and a couple of kids that are going to continue the work, and it's been an ongoing process. So, just moving forward with this, and feel free to stop me at any time if you want me to explain something. Objectives for what we were planning on doing tonight. Three things to share, questions and answers. So, the first thing we were going to share is where we came from. The second thing, we put a bunch of working groups together to try to figure out just the different aspects of, you know, what were the problems that we're facing, and what do we have to do, how do we move forward. The third thing on the list for tonight was to kind of share what's next. You know, where do we go from this point? What are the next challenges we're going to face? And then, at the end, question and answers. And I can, this is all in a Google slideshow. If you want to copy that, you know, it's easily shared. So, where did the idea come from? We were sitting in class. We were working on, I want to say, business organizations, cooperatives, partnerships, liability, limited liability partnerships, things like that. And somebody said, hey, well, what about a school store? So, we took, we took a day, and we're like, well, I don't know. And they're like, well, let's try this. And I said, okay, let's try it. So, what did we do? We called in Terry and Lynn. They came over and spent a day answering questions. Lynn didn't enjoy being in front of this class. Very well, thank you. We called in Mr. Cum, had a discussion. The students had prepared questions beforehand. We did answer, you know, we asked them questions, and they had answers. We called in a representative from Madup who does a lot of the clothing for the district, different sporting, different coaches, different events like that. We called in Chef Matt in the food service, had a great conversation on what we can sell, where we can get what we want, and what the specific rules on that were. And then, we talked to Jeff Rodano, representing Coca-Cola, on potentially what type of partnership would Coca-Cola like to have with a school store. So, each one of those was a different class meeting, 40 to 50 minutes worth. Kids had pretty decent questions, got a lot of good information from the people that we talked to. So, a couple of students I've got, Ms. Madeline Fluno, Shelby Winkelman, Chad Spanxey, and Brandon Kunder, sorry. They're going to go through specific things that we looked at. Each one of these things where you look at the top and says physical space was a working group. Okay, so, we had a group working specifically with each one of those groups of people that we brought in. They were kind of taking the lead on that. These four individuals are going to share with you what we're looking at. So, Maddie's question.
Okay, so, this is the location of where it should be is on the library. And there's an upper level that would be renovated into a school store. So, this is looking north. As you can see, Mr. Roxer's standing in there. Do you want to show the other angles?
Yep. This is the wall in between the commons and the upper lars. So, right as you walk in the entryway, the immediate door to your left, there's a doorway there, and then stairs coming down.
So, this is looking, this gives you a little more idea of what would be there.
And this would be then looking at the stairs.
Yeah. There's spots for merchandise inside. And we have cabinets that are glass cabinets that hold stuff. So, this is what we'd like to get for a cash register. It's very mobile, it tracks electronically, and it creates electronic invoices. It accepts both cash, credit, debit cards, and you are also able to get cards on it. It can be accessed by a computer, like Mr. Roxer could oversee what's going on. And it's customizable. You can get Bluetooth barricade scanner, lock wire and stuff for it, and, oh, you get, yeah, it's actually works really well with that. And this is the other one we have for free. It was done by the athletic association. It really just says receipts and cash, so you can do with it.
For apparel, like the main purpose we had was to get merchandise to the community who has no option to buy Nikusa apparel. And also the stewardess. We're not just selling shirts, pants, stuff, pants, tops, we're selling pens, pencils, and other things, like actual school supplies. In this place, something, you just go spend a few bucks and get, you know, what you need, you know, notebooks, we don't have none. We're also thinking, you know, it has a dial you need for chemistry and notebooks, so you don't have to go and buy them, you just buy them in the school store. Brandon will go through some of the things for about the seller, trying to sell, which says a key in.
And on top of the whole, the basic utensils, pens, notebooks, and all that stuff, also always kind of get on the other level and sell things that are different that you don't normally see, like the foam fingers or the rally card for sporting events, to get more of our high-tech sporting events, and then like stuff and bags and stuff for sporting, people that are reporting, yeah, people that are sports that want that and need that. We also are going to sell like high socks for the different teams, for football heads and basketball heads, but maybe we'll sell the socks.
We're also kind of getting so that when the football players use their socks for special games, people score them, and comp them for a cheaper price. So, it's just a way to make some situations.
Okay, so, this is like some of the snacks we're thinking of providing. Some of the individually wrapped ones are the ice cream bars, beef jerky muffins, just something you could snack on, with money for very snack time. We're also thinking of doing like ice cream, hot push-ups and stuff, just for a little fun. And then, there's some big food action. We're thinking about doing Gatorade, Propel, Apple, just a couple ideas of what we would
And then, back to me, what's next? So, what we're kind of trying to think about doing is, quite honestly, in about eight weeks, we'd love to dive the doors open. We would be offering a full line, a limited apparel line. The athletic association has agreed to allow us to sell their stuff that they already have. They would get their money back, we would get the profit, is the way I understand. But Mr. Olson and I have talked about this. It's, you know, it would be beneficial. We don't have to buy stuff, we've got stuff there, and they can sell through their stuff. Limited snacks, some merchandise, and then really kind of use quarter four as a, hey, what works and what doesn't work? What type of things do we have to create policy-wise for my employees? How long can we be open? Can we be open every hour of the day or not? And what works and what doesn't? Starting the fall of 2016-2017 school year, depending on how well fourth quarter went, we would really like to be open every hour of the day. Our market would be those kids in study hall, or, you know, if somebody's coming in to buy a shirt, or Nikusa apparel, or things like that. We would be offering then, like Shelby said, the full line of snacks, full line of merchandise, and different apparel options. This apparel slide, Maida's got a full order form for us. This is what I can put on here in a short notice. Anywhere from fleece, to more sports, to more sweatshirts, and then generic t-shirts, athletic t-shirts, moving down into like, like you mentioned, sweatpants and those, they're called soccer pants, I don't know if that makes sense. So, we would be offering then, in 2016, a full line of apparel. Part of the partnership working with the athletic association was an attempt to get a more consistent sale of athletic apparel during sporting events. So, whether or not that's in the high school, just moving some stuff down to the gym and selling it, or figuring out how to sell more apparel at football games and things like that, that's kind of the figure out what works and doesn't work part of this thing. And then, you know, continue to figure this thing out. This has not been done since 1970.
Early 80s.
Early 80s was the last store in the high school. Trying to figure out how things have changed, trying to make things better, trying to make this an experience for the students working in the store, as well as, you know, try to figure out what people want. So, we do have copies of, the students actually put together a business plan, I believe that was linked in the agenda. They did go through, figure out who the market was, they went through, figured out, I'm drawing a blank, and what else is on there? So, they went through and they did this whole business plan. Our company description would be a school-based, student-run retail location to sell goods and services to fund student activities. Should probably mention that, sorry. Whatever profit the school store makes would be deposited into a student council activity. The student council then would be able to take that money and redistribute it back to people that are coming to the student council looking to fund things. You know, whatever those student-led things are happening, if we have a little bit of profits here, that's where that would be hopefully to go. Market, we did pretty well, students, staff, parents, other community members. Organization of the school store, obviously, there's going to have to be somebody in charge. That's going to be me for now. We do have a couple of individuals interested in helping the school store once we finally get up and running. Shelby wants to take a big role in, you know, running the store next year, that's why she's sitting here right now. She's kind of trying to get caught up and push us forward a little bit from there. Service or product line, I figure we covered that one. Marketing, I feel like it's a good opportunity, school-wide. You can get those different classes into the school store participating. There's opportunities for, you know, for relationships between different classes and a school store. And like I said, financial projection at the bottom there. Hopefully, we can cover what we said. I mean, realistically, any profit left over goes into student council, and hopefully, you know, I feel it's going to be, you know, a year-ish to really get our feet under us, figure out where we're headed from that point. But I don't see why it wouldn't be successful like that. So, that's kind of where we are with what's next. And then, the only other thing we had was, obviously, I assume you got some questions for this case. Having thrown all of that at you very quickly, questions, comments, things you would like further explained.
You had mentioned that you were going to be using some of the athletic pop's inventory of.
The current inventory they have, yep.
What about the rest of the inventory? How are you going to provide?
The stuff that we were planning on buying. I've been talking with Ms. Knight from the, I think you guys were the first group we brought in, and she and I have agreed that we're going to figure it out as we go.
And this is the epitome of Fund 80. I mean, Fund 80 is absolutely, start them out, but be ready to make it work.
And then, we do really believe that six months, I think we'd be on our own. I feel like if we're selling what we bring in, if we do the research and we, if we figure out what people are going to buy, we should be rolling that inventory over, and we should be on our own from that point. I was expecting.
The hard part is to start it. Once you get started.
Right, 100%, right. I really believe by next winter, you know, spring limited, I'm sorry, fall, yeah, spring limited, fall and winter, from that point, I feel they should be on their own, and they should be, they should be selling stuff. You know, they're going to order what hopefully the kids want and hoping for. Yep.
So, would students volunteer work at this school?
For fourth quarter, we're kind of limited because I can't, our guidance office can't offer students credit for a quarter credit. The idea is next year to offer a school store as a work experience, work-study. They could actually work a full year for one credit under our work-study program. They could extend that if I've got it right, and I would, I'd have to bounce this off Rachel to make sure, they could potentially do a two-year youth apprenticeship-type thing in the school store. It would be a real retail experience. I guess I would be their employer, and they could put, you know, use it for future references and everything like that. So, volunteering initially to get us off our feet, and then, quite honestly, the plan is to do actual interviews, post-job openings, let everybody interview for it, and if they can work it into their schedule, set up an interview committee, and take all those candidates and go through, see which hours they do have available in their schedule and do actual
A lot of entrepreneurs have high hopes and opportunities as far as resources and funds, and it sounds like that may be here. But at some point, if that doesn't become fruitful, is there a backup plan?
I would assume that if, so if we don't make it, or is there a better way to make it? If we don't make it, quite honestly, I feel everything that we bought could still be sold. It wouldn't be as available, it wouldn't be as readily available, it wouldn't be as accessible by community members, which is the bigger issue with regards to apparel. Both of our secretaries have told me time and again, people come in wanting to buy stuff, and they, they send them to you.
They come to me, and I have no choice but to sell them.
So, we're really trying to create that community opportunity and give these kids a retail experience. Quite honestly, if it doesn't work, you know, it doesn't work. We tried, I don't think we're out much, because like I said, everything that we bought, we can still sell. It doesn't go anywhere. All of the food, snacks, and drinks would actually be coming straight through food service, so it could be reabsorbed by the food service, and we'd already have paid for it, so it wouldn't be any hardship to them. So, it's, you know, it's something neat to try, and I don't know why it wouldn't work, but if it doesn't, I don't feel like the district would be out much. Even the technology, the point-of-sale system that we use, could still be used to take cards, to take credit cards at sporting events, and they could still use it down at their concessions. So, everything we're doing can be used for something else, in my mind. Backup plan, no, not really. I mean, we're either going to make it or we're not.
As things don't work, you'll probably be looking for opportunities to make.
In changing, yeah, I agree, as we go, I mean, the opportunity would be there to change potentially what we're selling, or how we're selling it, or, you know, I agree, as we go through, as we hit those roadblocks, potentially, what a great learning.
Good resources.
You know, and we kind of did that as we went through setting up the store, what are the issues? And then, these kids pretty much solved them. I mean, I was just kind of the, hey, let's get back on track guy, but they really came up with most of the solutions, honestly.
So, one of the things that I had thought about too is, you know, if you look at tech ed, there's a lot of entrepreneurial opportunities down there right now with the 3D printing. In art, there's opportunities for some entrepreneurial shit kinds of sales. So, I challenge you guys to really reach out to the student body, to see if we can figure out ways to help them start creating some imaginable things that people might birth in artwork, or, you know, I was down and looked in the tech ed room, people are coming up with some really probably keychains we could start with, with the 3D printer. So, if you could reach out and really challenge people to market some of their creations, that would be awesome.
And then, I think of partnering with the special ed department, too.
We're already talking about.
Partnering with students, building life skills and functional skills and on-site training.
I've got three different opportunities already lined up, Olivia and I have already, starting in like a couple of weeks, actually. So.
As much as possible, yeah.
I mean, it's not, it's not a high school thing, it's a community thing, really. It doesn't exist right now. We're trying to create that thing that you can go to, to get the stuff that you want for Nikusa apparel.
Well, think of the pathways involved in that.
Mr. Roxer, other than you mentioned the point-of-sale register, is there anything else that you have to purchase?
The only thing we would actually have to buy would be the apparel, the snacks, I mean, the food and the merch, I mean, the things that would be sold in the store, we would all have to purchase.
No cases, though?
We did already do that in, the only reason I jumped the gun is I was on Craigslist. One of my groups was looking at physical space and how to set this thing up. They hopped on Craigslist, found a couple of display cases from a guy down at the bells, and he was blowing them out. We purchased two full glass display cases, I don't know, four feet by 30-some inches. They do light up, we're not planning on lighting them, it's just there as an option. $75 each. Great shape. We're going to pay them when we have time, but, display cases are already there. As far as I understand it, the ice cream, if they end up doing ice cream, the Coca-Cola cooler, any of the actual machinery we would need, Coca-Cola would find us, or the vendor itself would come up with the cool. We wouldn't own it, we wouldn't, as far as I understand it, be responsible for maintaining. They would, you know, I think they'd get the most retail-type things, they provide coolers for.
Similar to the milk, though.
Yeah, same, same vendor.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, not really, no. The only other expense might be, and we kind of worked this into our startup cost projection, the library's in the middle of a remodel-type project. It might carry over into that space a little bit. Mr. McKeever and I have kind of discussed changing the look of the library entrance and kind of molding it into the school store, downstairs, library, creating a place for kids to come and read books, like a coffee club type of thing. There would be magazines, there would be tables, credit, you know, we talk technology, there would be availability for them to get on a Chromebook or something like that, and kind of change the, change the feel of that immediate space. But as far as costs and tables, but a couple of little coffee tables, I mean, in some schools, they kind of put that into their initial projection as to startup prices. And it's not to say that we couldn't even find something around the school that's not being used in the room in. I just pushed them to try to come up with, what do you need in order to actually make this happen? Major expenses, I can tell you right off the top, it's apparel. I mean, it's not cheap. You know, I was stunned talking apparel from Madup on, if you want to bring one thing in, you know, it's 12 different pieces. You hit all your sizes, and it's, one thing is 12 different things to order, you can't just bring in one. So, we're going to try to, you know, work out an order form, I think that's for those costs a little bit, but as far as physical, physical actual items, not a lot, really. Thank you, guys.
Fantastic. So, I'd like to. Any other questions?
They did really, really good work, and they had us.
I know, and you're offered so that we can get that.
I'm hoping day one sort of works, honestly, which means we're ordering stuff in about three weeks. Blessing, but, you know, any questions, any, you know, advice, anything like that?
Stop by and critique it.
Yeah, we'll have to turn it on, but we will have the time.
The nice thing Shelby did mention was, if we do the square system, it would, you could use gift cards. So, there is the possibility to preload a gift card and let, you know, students have those things. Nathan had talked about potentially using that as a rewards program of sorts. You could, you could, you know, hand those out as positive reinforcement for something.
System works off wireless.
The whole register was wireless, yes, which was part of the benefit because we would be able to move it wherever we were going. Yeah, and actually, Brandon's group was working on a, on a way to do that mobilely, and believe it or not, there's a $5,000 mobile front card out there that we're not going to. The whole thing folds out, there's racks, guys hold. You just stand there and write it down there? No, we came up with an alternative to that.
So, the students have, I'm sorry, the students have finished up for a semester?
We're, yeah, we caught, we caught me in the middle. This was a project for last semester's class. I've got a brand-new semester class, a brand-new econ class. We're not to quite that point yet, but they are, Trump had a bit to get working on, and I've been holding it back.
So, using some of the kids from first semester to come back and?
These two gentlemen are first semester, everybody else is kind of busy at this point in time. These two ladies are actually sophomores, not even in economics, but interested in getting, participating in the project. Kaylee's actually in econ right now. So, there, Trump had a bit trying to get me out of our textbook into the world of economics.
Push him. Thank you for going forward with this.
You know, it's been something I've been thinking on a while, so, and the potential to fund student things through student council was kind of the, kind of the bigger, you know, we don't, I think we can fund it. I, you know, something that's going to work and perpetuate.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Our next presentation is Nikusa students, they have a presentation on cable.
They're a little nervous.
It's all right. We're nervous.
Hi, my name is Amara, and I'm really here today to address some of the class needs and weaknesses of the school, to ask for your help with the mission that impacts all of us here. For a class to manage, we're concerned with certain paper situations and, well, during our project, we could have orders and to do that central system, is it energy, 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 changes, which concerns us both. Nature and health are our minds, and how we can describe the nature to the surrounding forests to the home, to show that this is an environmental fact, and is there any other
I'm Grace King.
I'm Avery.
Map we're heading off to, map we're heading off to shows areas of concentration, which you can approve of and be allowed to be in the farm, to be in the tree, these are essential images there. As you can see on the map, there are dead red, dark red areas, which are actual borders of the fields. The red areas surrounding them are in concentration. Because of the distance between fields and nearby residents, to pick up their belongings.
Thinking of residents, each green dot indicates warehouses. Cluster over here is actually all the houses of almost all the students in the school. Cluster over here is actually all the houses of almost all the students in the classroom. We put a star on your map to indicate where our schools are. You'll notice how close we are to the gyft zone. We're not only concerned about how close our school is, but all of our friends and family as well.
Hi, my name is Camer.
I'm Avery. Now think of the roads our buses travel on. So what is causing us to be concerned? First, you'll need to understand what a center pivot sprayer is. How many of you have seen these while driving around? These are used to irrigate the fields, but did you know that it's not just water being sprayed? It's a mixture of water and local manure called swerve. The research on this method of application found that harmful pathogens can still be detected up to six hundred percent. Not only that, but high levels of ammonia and hydrogen sulfide gas are released. Now take another look at the map you've been given and how close our schools are. Think about the students who are led outside every day during recess in their class. Now think of the roads our buses travel on this morning and afternoon with our kids. How many of these fields do they pass? How many of them are being sprayed, sprayed on at the same time? I doubt there will be an alert to tell the students to close the windows so they don't inhale bacteria from the manure flying through the air.
Our handouts list some of the important points to be aware of regarding airborne health risks. The other concern is the effect manure can have on groundwater when applied in great amounts. You guys, two people are, because most people in the NACOOS use city water, not well water. Our main concern is about the airborne risk. We have some ideas for how you can prevent this from happening, but I encourage you to do some. Also, research your own benefits and to better understand why we felt the need to come here to.
My name is Karen. So how can you help? We feel that it's important to look at thousands can be the worst one. We asked for you to contact the DNR and request a public hearing, something that was supposed to provide a turn to their thoughts. We also urge you to contact your state, state and local representatives to express your concerns. We're providing you with suggestive, like several different examples. At the very least, we should warn students of students of what's going on. This could be done through the midlife meeting or through on the bus. The lesson that we should be keeping in mind.
Hi, my name is Lys. Thank you for finding your time and attention tonight. If you have any questions, know where to find us, at NACOOS for us.
Do you guys have any questions? A little shy, but.
You did good. Yeah.
Um, and then Bill, if you wanted to stop here for a second, um, introduce yourself. He's actually, um, one of the people that we use as resource, he's involved in the protective council and came to talk to Terry a while ago and let know a little bit about what was going on and our student volunteers who have come to help. Start the word.
Actually, there's a whole lot of friendly faces out there. I, I taught in this district for thirty-five years. A couple of people sitting around the table here were my students, so driving students. Two years ago, when I ran for county board, this was a real significant issue in Saratoga. And I, I really think the other eighteen supervisors didn't have any idea what a CAFO might mean so close to a large number of people. So in the past two years, um, we formed the three committees on the county board. We've looked at issues we probably never thought we were gonna look at before. Haven't really come to any real decisions yet. Kind of interesting tomorrow in the state legislature, um, this is a very motion issue. So when I started talking about spray irrigation of waste, and of course you've seen the map, and on a westerly wind, how close that could hit to the middle school and the other schools, you just don't know how, how significant a problem it would be. So I was really pleased to have the students from the Native American School come to one of our Cretewood County presentations. They already had done a lot of research for middle school kids and then they just shared that with you. I, I think rather than talking anymore, I know you've got a full agenda tonight, I, I would try to answer some questions from the county's point of view, although this is Brad Hamilton's district. I'm actually across the river and Brad is just across the street. So if I can answer questions, I'll, I'll try to do that.
So this map is showing all the stuff on the, on the west side and the current existing facilities that they have. And so you're just kind of interpreting that this is, this same situation will happen when they start building. That's kind of basically what you're telling me.
As far as his interest, but what we came to you guys about is about central sand theory.
The one that's already.
The one that's already out.
The one that's already there.
Yeah.
But, but this same situation could happen in the world.
Yeah, and I think, given a period of time as well, but we didn't know if this was ever gonna happen or not. The, the state of Wisconsin formed a manure work group committee made up of many of the scientists that have been recently unemployed at the DNR, but they've looked at the issue for over two years. They were gonna come up in about six months with their findings that they couldn't. And so now I hear that maybe March, mid-March, they may finally make some sort of a, a best practice. You know, what is the best practice in agriculture as far as get rid, getting rid of the manure from five thousand cows? So we'd see the CAFO that's, that's down in Juneau County out here and then possibly a new one in Saratoga. The, the issue, and I think one of the kids talked about it, is the amount of pathogens that are in, in the liquid manure. And, um, it said that there's a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty different pathogens. Four of them are known to be quite dangerous to humans. On a west wind drift, to me, you know, looking at shaded red colors on the map gets just awful close to, uh, not only our communities well, but the schools.
Well, and not just the schools, but one of the kids mentioned that you can actually see their homes in some of those red areas.
Maybe interested to have the boys and girls pull a step further and, uh, see what the projections are for the time Saratoga is gonna happen there and do the same thing there.
Okay, here's, here's the issue, though. On September twenty-eighth last year, the DNR said this is good to go, I'll ditch. And so we believe that with spring, you know, maybe April, they're gonna have a lagoon, a fifty million gallon, maybe not quite that big lagoon at the central sands area that's full, you know, it's full from the winter. That liquid manure has got to go somewhere and it's intended to go out there. So, you know, you might see it happening April fifteenth, May first. It's been approved.
And, and just to give you another look at what some of the students, we initially got involved because of the Saratoga one that's being proposed. And, um, they've, and it will be in the paper, I'm hoping. Um, they all wrote letters to the editor after doing, um, I think we did the research for about two months. Um, they've written out letters to the editor about their concerns and that they would like, you know, more people to be aware of it because they went out in the community and actually did surveys and interviews and were surprised by how little people actually knew about it. They, oh yeah, I've seen the pink house, but had no idea what it was about. And the kids and I are gonna be doing some planning on a fundraiser of our own because we'd like to, um, get pink house of our own, to put it in our yard, our yards. Um, so that'll be coming up. But then, um, a group of people that Bill works with, um, came and actually spoke to the kids, um, about, you know, groundwater levels and how that gets affected. We had, um, I can't remember the guy's name, Kevin, from UWC Stevens Point, and he does a lot of water research. Yep, he came and actually talked to the kids about how water gets affected by contaminants due to manure and everything. And, um, then when Bill's group came and talked to the kids, they mentioned to them about how this was going on and hey, you really should let your school district know because we need more people to say to the DNR, okay, is this really happening? Um, why wasn't there a public hearing? Because they are, um, if, if you look at the documents legally, they are supposed to offer a public hearing if there's major changes to a nutrient management plan going on.
And again, I heard some of the kids saying something about it, but look at the roads that the school buses will travel. I ride a motorcycle and I've been near artesian water, being spray irrigated from a quarter mile away with a twenty mile an hour wind and I see the mist on my windshield. And now if it's not artesian water, if it's liquid manure, um, that's something that, that frightens me. So I, I took that issue to the county board two years ago and, and we're still in three committees dealing with it, but I think it's gonna start happening, maybe within a couple months. So there was a, there was a school bus driver in the Stevens Point District that, that had the, the intelligence, the presence of mind over there when a crop duster came over the school bus on a warm spring or fall day with the windows open and there was drift, you know, that, that was dropping on the bus. He drove the school bus right to St. Michael's. You know, he, he knew what could possibly happen. So, you know, we have to be thinking on, on the west side, if that's something we really want. And I think we tell the DNR, boy, that there's problems here. I have no idea what that manure work group is gonna say, if this is a safe practice or not. I say no. Any, any questions that the, the young people that did so well this, this evening or for the teacher or I can answer for you?
Yeah, let us know, contact us.
But thank you for coming to share.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Absolutely. And maybe keep us informed, too, as you continue to study. You know, even, even updates, I'm sure there's gonna be more letters to the editor that we'll be reading about. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna skip over the administrative reports and go to new business and start with Nexus Solutions and, uh, all the board members, given some DNR um, since it's been writing, uh, elementary school, they can't have their contracts.
I have cottonite here. Cottonite, come on down.
Come on, man. Anywhere, right here?
Sure, that's fine.
Good evening, once again, you continue your journey.
Yeah.
Report members of the board and staff, glad to know every one of you now, so it's been a pleasure. And we've got one more thing here, or a couple, I guess, tonight for you to, uh, debate, add to, and also hopefully approve. We spent, uh, spent some time on the theater lighting at the high school. I worked with administration and, uh, came up with a plan. You've all seen this, and I'll go through it, what we're asking for tonight. We did it two competitive bids. Theater lighting is very, uh, it's mostly of a design build nature when you're dealing with that. There was two companies, one out of Stevens Point, one out of Milwaukee. They were main stage and soundworks. Um, the lighting portion of its main stage came in at a bid of two hundred and nineteen thousand four eighty and soundworks was two hundred and forty-two thousand nine sixty-three. Main stage was less expensive by twenty-three thousand four eighty-three. So we'd be looking for you to approve that contract. Also, um, with this, uh, project, there was some structural issues that were found, as you all know. Um, we've got that vetted and we got a con, uh, a bid from Almond Construction to, to the structural improvements for thirty-five thousand. And we've also got the electrical improvements from Current Technologies, thirty-three thousand seven fifty. Both were instrumental in getting us the, uh, solution as we worked through it and working closely with the theater company to meet the electrical requirements and also the structural to maintain all the, uh, the equipment we need to from the ceiling. There's also, uh, an issue with the fire curtain. That current fire curtain hasn't worked in years and also is known to contain asbestos, so we do have to abate that. That would be through the district's, um, current advisor, North Star Environmental, and they provided us a quote last year of nine thousand dollars to abate that curtain. So in all total, the, uh, current, or the original scope was just to add lighting and that obviously grew. The current scope budget was forty-two thousand four forty-five. Uh, we're here today to have the approval of this and it would put the total project over two hundred and fifty-four thousand seven eighty-five. But it would give you a long-term solution to this issue that currently exists out, exists out there. Overall project has been favorable, contingencies are healthy. Um, we still have an overall contingency of three hundred and thirty-three thousand four eighteen as we move forward this summer.
Do we have any, uh, major concerns or Chris noting that it might eat up the contingency?
Um, there's always concerns. We've got some unknowns. We're opening walls, we're digging in the dirt, um, but I don't foresee any major, we're touching all of the building really.
Yeah, we've been exposed to some windows earlier, so.
Yeah, this is actually, building is very clean. Yep, there's not much abatement that we'll have to do here.
Any questions?
We've spent a lot of time talking about this. So we're finally to the point where we're ready to take that step.
If we were, if we were approved of this, when would we start that part of the project at the stage?
Uh, we've been, uh, discussed that to some point, uh, you know, once it's approved, we'd be digging a little bit further, but we do know that there's a big production at the end of the year. So our thought is now we would start immediately after that production. The, uh, the fire marshal in town here has allowed us to continue using it under its current state, so I don't think we want to mess with that.
How long would this take, then?
Probably already by fall.
So we're basically, we have two projects waiting.
Yeah, and, you know, it's good, I mean, the Almonds are here, Current Technology drives the road, so, uh, you know, all that, extra crews, and I'll make sure we get it done for you in time.
It really is not that long of a project for one.
Right, we work with you guys and, you know, I'm assuming there's summer school over there, so we coordinate in and out of the building, keep the place safe, and, uh, we want to get out there quickly and you guys want us out of there.
Is there like a drop dead date where we have to be done in the summer at a certain time? I guess I'm thinking about like, you know, back to school, any kind of back to school plan? Is there some date that we absolutely have to have it done by?
It'll be, it'll probably be in the future.
And we do not have enough.
Yeah, and, you know, once we dig into this, if there's time now, I mean, it's February, I'm gonna get the, uh, you know, contracts rolled, we gotta get things ordered, so we work with the vendors and see how quickly that can be here. the vendors and see how quickly that can be here. But just like anybody else, there's slow time, so if we can sneak it in right after play, before the next one, we would do it, but I would be more towards starting June or whenever your last production is in there. I don't know if there's anything for graduation in there yet, we'll talk through that, so. Imagine there's a little bit of time between your last production and the end of school, so we might get in there and get a jump on it.
Well, we have words, senior words, so we could move that, we could move that if that meant allowing you to get things going without, you know, interrupting too much. Big words, we could do that in the gym, we could do reeves of words, senior words in a different location if that meant you were going to be.
Yeah, we've done this and we continue to do work in schools, I don't think you'd have to move anything for us. I think if there were summer classes in there, that would be an issue then.
That would work.
Well, I haven't done by, you know, the fall.
You were in there also last year.
I think you moved everything here last year, didn't you, in middle school?
No, our summer school has always been a place.
Okay.
What is part of it? Are you comfortable with that?
I'm very comfortable with this.
So you're looking for a motion?
We are looking for a motion.
So I saw. Second. If you have a motion, a second to approve the expenditure for theater lighting and the fire curtain and current fire curtain abatement and some electrical and structural here, so we have a motion and a second on it for all those individuals. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. A motion, very good. Thank you. Thank you.
The other, we can. We also have the contingencies, and before we dig in, you know, them, we're going to make sure that the project's going to, you know, be successful. But there always is that, okay, what are we going to do with the contingencies? There actually is 100,000 roughly of owner contingencies, so we'd be looking for the board to give us some direction. We don't want to go down a road to spend these contingencies on items that you guys have no interest in us doing. So, we have a list of six things that we came up with, working with the district, and also some things that are actually fairly minor on here that our commissioners have found. We didn't do any mechanical upgrades at the middle school. We found a few things over there, you know, a heat wheel that's out, so you know, those are fairly easy fixes, but we want to make sure that we're going in the right direction. I think some of the other ones would be the casework at the lab labs at the high school. It's been discussed as we've moved along. If the board would like us to basically go out, design estimates, come back for you guys to approve at a later time. The other one is the building envelope at the district office. You guys have walked around that building, a lot of it's potentially been eaten away. I think that building, here as you can tell, and what's with the district, it was a old storage at one time, and now we've got to beat it. Building wasn't originally designed for that. We have already had a guy look at it, one of our designers, and would recommend a just repaired to that, just a extruded foam insulation around it, really looks kind of like a stucco. Again, if you guys got other ideas, I know we're in the process with Han's goal in our office, you guys looked at a lot of things. You guys want us to look at things, it's not a for approval tonight, but we just want some direction from the board on things that you guys would like us to look at.
Matt just, Brian just asked about the casework upgrades, that's in the face lab. I think it's a red. Rejoin the kitchens.
Right. Rejoining the kitchen.
You want to, Brian just mentioned the ductwork, the fans. Can I just talk a bit about that, how we work out a solution for that?
Fans?
With the exhaust in the face?
Oh, yes. The bacon?
Yeah.
Bacon.
Yeah, the.
Good question, Brian.
So, right now, we're essentially still commissioning the high school. We commissioned the new work and we commissioned some of the old stuff, the old work, or the existing. Most of it was touched, of course, but we have, we found out when they were cooking bacon in the foods lab, it was spilling everywhere and people were smelling, and we couldn't actually, it took us a while to figure out what was going on. The exhaust fan was pulling the right CFMs. What we ended up doing is, actually, a few of us came out, I wasn't one of them, but our engineering team came out and found out that the light fixtures actually were had a small vent around them, space, a gap, so it wasn't being sucked in and out through the exhaust fan, it was just kind of blowing everywhere and up in the ceiling. So, we put the right lights in there and.
Lights are, lights we got in there on the.
The nineteen.
Does that same lighting issue affect other rooms as far as the efficiency of this?
Um, no, the other exhaust would only be in fax rooms, locker rooms. So, and we've got still, there's return air, but it's all ducted now, so whatever we're putting into that space, CFM wise, it's taken out through the duct, the return air. Otherwise, you over pressure a room, can't shut the door or it's flame shut off. So, building's been completely balanced now.
Yeah, I mean, Chad's still working through some lights.
So the balance reports are available to everybody to, I suppose. Chad is the commissioner, he'll be checking out. With any project, there's always going to be valves that are wired backwards, whether valves open or shut. Our engineer will tell you, no matter who does it, 10% of them are that way, so I think we can sure that it's all.
So the next step for the board is, do we need to come back to you?
Yeah, we'd be looking for a list, yep. Items you want us to.
So, we don't have enough money to do all of those items, but we have to pick and choose, is that what you're saying?
Well, the six I've shown you here, that's kind of what we've come up with. I know there was some athletic improvements talked about early on. Anything else you guys have heard of? Granted, if we spend all the contingency, it's for not, but we think this is going to be contingencies left. And we don't want to come with you, come to you in, say, August and say, "All right, we've got two months until somebody wants to suspend this."
So we're just, what we would just do is come up with an idea where we should send you if we have money left.
Right.
And when Terry and I and Ike and Todd sat down, we thought the first two were probably the most important, because the life of the administration building is probably less than 15 years, if I'm not mistaken.
If we don't do something.
If we don't do something.
If we don't do something. And the face room obviously needs an overhaul. I mean, that's a clear pathway that is kind of right now embarrassing, so.
So with respect to the monies, we're talking about 100 and 1,000. So, looking at this list, I mean, do you have any ballpark dollars attached to any of these right now, or?
Yeah, I can throw some darts at it for you, but I do want to clear up the contingency. The 100,000 is owner-directed contingency. There's still 333,000 left in contingencies, so roughly, say, 233,000. If we don't spend that, it comes back, you know, we're not taking that home with us.
Sure.
You know, those are things that you guys can still do. Granted, we're talking to 230, we're going to spend some of it along the way. Ideally, we don't spend any, but still a remodel.
That's essential for facing this space, doing some work, because I have that going to, I don't know, energy efficiency, even here.
Um, well, as far as the project, we were going to put one new unit, some reheats in the electric reheat, in the ductwork, to give them better comfort over there. That actually is still a budgeted item.
Okay.
We'd probably be coming back to you if you still wanted to proceed, but we have not engineered that yet.
I just want to make that point, from an energy efficiency standpoint, that building could probably use some.
Uh, with, yeah, the, by adding that exterior, extruded form is about four inches, and it's going to give you the insulation value, plus it's going to protect that exterior. Because right now, if you ever have a chance, put it in the back of the building and it's actually, the water is eating on the brick, and we'd have to replace those for sure. I mean, 15 years, you couldn't spend zero and make 15, in my opinion, but you have to spend some on making 15 back there. The other line item, or the other item on that list was the ADA accessibility into that bathroom, so that would be a separate, even though those are kind of lined together, or this is how you can mount, those are two separate issues back there, so. The good news is, is a fairly large bathroom is probably in plenty of boys, or it's one toilet that's been abandoned, so there is ways to move things around in there and still have a decent rest for the sessions. It's very hard, it's principles, I mean, jumping up and down.
My current bathroom.
It's eight floors and it needs anything else.
The insulation will help.
So Todd, with respect to, like, throwing some dollars at this.
Well, the casework are really, that one's a harder one, you've done that, you know, casework can be way up here, way down here. Middle Road School for one classroom, back slab, that's going to be a little bit more, you know, we probably could spend 20 there, easy, 20,000. The building envelope, you could probably spend over, right around 100,000. The ADA could be, I think that one would be pretty easy, but we've got to get in there, we've got to dig out, you know, move a toilet, you've got to dig out underground, and we've had some wastewater lines that we couldn't find before, but typically, I'd put that at 15 to 20 as well. The replaced door seals at the middle school, I think a lot of your stoves get in, right, John?
Mm-hmm.
So, our commission, that was from Chad, he thought every door probably needed it. There you could just probably spend, there, just alone. Basically, you take, put new sweeps, new door seals on every door over there. And that is really connected damage savings there, and that's a piece of our things we look at. The upgrade AHU-7, that is that heat wheel that's currently not working.
What is a heat wheel?
It basically takes the exhaust, the warm exhaust you're throwing out of the building, carbon dioxide, and it preheats the cold air you're bringing in in the wintertime and in the summertime, it's the reverse. You're sending out cool air, is your building air conditioned?
It is.
Yeah, so you're sending out cold air, that's a little carbon dioxide, you're bringing in hot air, preconditioned air before it gets the coil.
So is there only one of those in the building?
Um, I wouldn't imagine there's more.
There's just the one that you found that had.
That item, I don't think there's much of all. And then the sixth one is, one of the exhaust fans in the boiler room we found that we had replaced was, you said it's a light replacement, I mean, we probably spent a thousand bucks, I guess, and just dropped it in there like a backup. That's probably really high, but I don't, I won't want myself, never know.
But the casework for the face lab though, that's just the casework? That doesn't include appliances or anything like that?
No.
Okay, just a point.
And if we do, approve the casework, we may stop making some appliances as well.
Well, the appliances right now, I believe, are residential.
That's right.
And if somebody doing the casework, we should replace the appliances.
With the exception of that one freezing, that's a question.
Correct.
Todd, when you say the casework, are you strictly meaning cabinets with collar tops or without collar tops?
Well, essentially, that would be up to, you know, the district and whoever wanted to, but again, it goes from key lamp to whatever collar top, you can get a lot of fancy, so I think the cost involved, and what can replace it would be up to the district. Well, any quantity, I mean, you want something to last, obviously, maybe still in the school and you're responsible.
And when the board went through it the last time, that room in between?
Yeah, but.
It's all patched together, you guys have seen it, so there's going to be some, need to be some work there too.
Some structural work that we can do, restructure and maybe.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, we basically.
Looked at a lot of this stuff.
We haven't, don't need because we're, they tell us that they need, they need, and then every four months, we'll be back in front of you saying, "Okay, here's what we found, and here's what we have."
What would you like direction from us?
Well, really, the list can come anytime, I mean, we're going to be finishing up next fall, so these things do take time to design. So, the sooner the better for us, but you know, Ike's going to be pretty busy in June and all. So, we can have an answer by March 34th, that would be great. Next word, if you guys wanted to discuss, let us know.
So is there a cost, Todd, to have that?
We're just looking for direction now, just like the original project, you know, once like the district office would go, we'd have to have designers come out and give us a spec so bidders can bid, and we'll bring all that to you at the time that we would ask for it to move forward.
But to get a cost estimate, and I know you threw your numbers at us, but to get, would you like a better estimate of what some of these items might cost?
Um, we would bring that cost you free term, yes.
Okay. So maybe we could have that sent to us and we get that out to the board?
Um, okay, so for all six of them?
And.
I mean, is there other things that you guys want us to look at? That's kind of, we could definitely do that, that's.
I don't know, you know, Mike, can you talk to that sound infiltration?
I don't have the list.
Oh.
Well, that was for the wrestling.
That one. And we had talked about that.
Yeah, we had talked about, what was the cost associated with that one?
That one is a crucible ceiling tile, with some insulation, so.
Great, and I've actually got the contract, mine up to this person, but there's a lot of concern that if we put a tiled ceiling in that low, that low area, it's going to reactively, and you could jump up and hit that, being a padded room like it is. So, struggling in ways to figure out a way to insulate that, provide a sound area without providing something that could get damaged and had to replace it right away. So, that's kind of where I'm at with that.
Well, and where the issue originally came from, we had talked about this last year before we did the project, the potential of the academy being there and having that sound, but what had happened is the gym, one of the gym classes must have went in there and that, you know, threw the academy off, and since then, Mike, has there been any? So they've stopped using that space during the school day, and they use it after school for wrestling, but, so maybe it's a, I don't know, have you had any?
Well, it's reduced, it's taken away a teaching space, similarly to the teaching space during the day. You know, it's, to me, it's kind of unfortunate that room, that that room is getting used for one thing, and it's just wrestling. When there are FIA activities that could very well use that, that space, the mats for different, different things, that they're not able to because of the noise.
So I thought maybe there'd be a solution where, you know, with that new spray-on stuff, but then there's some other consequences and.
To me, the spray-on stuff is used for fire, but I've never put it in, I mean, I'm not an architect, but I've never put it in. I think it would get picked away, I think, same issue you're running with. The ceiling we're talking about is just like this, it's a crucible ceiling tile, ACP, and it does help the sound. The current concerns we've been hearing is, like anything, you know.
Kids like to jump?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, back to the spray-on stuff, they also like to jump and pick, so how do you, how do you solve it and not have an issue, you know, three, four months later with the ball?
So let's give prices on this, maybe Ike can get a price on that and the board will have to chew on it.
But if there's any other ideas that the board has, make sure to forward them to Terry or Ike, and we can forward them on to Nexus.
Has the heating in the, the hot water in the lower girls locker room ever made it chew at this point, or is that something Steve was working on?
I've never heard it in this project sense, so it must be Steve's project.
And there were. And there were, I was there actually when he had Mike, Mike Lee the plumber, it sounded like he was a bad fellow that got James Keller underrated too hard this summer, but it does sound like it's been fixed, but I guess you check with Steve on that. But I was there talking to Mike, some of the underrated stuff, but he was working on it for sure.
So what do you guys, outside of our project?
It is outside our project, yeah. The plumber that was working on our project helped me a lot.
Well, and I will be working with Mr. Johnson and I think there's a meeting for the twenty-fourth of this month, getting people lined up to back up and.
Question to answer, I think the lock, so it's going to provide.
That was a great idea, so I think helping alleviate fears, just being able to ask questions.
Yeah, you've got more before, I understand, no worries. Does the board have any questions about hockey?
Thank you.
Thanks guys.
All right, next we have Scott Drowa with Forecast Five Analytics. Scott is going to give us a sample feed on the forecasting tool.
Yes, the new forecasting tool that I absolutely love. It's so much fun.
We'd love it if there was even more money in it.
I would love it. When did this roll out, Scott?
We rolled out over the summer.
Okay.
Just a little disclaimer, we see Forecast Five Analytics, I'm a hybrid employee with PMA, so employed with PMA Financial Network, also with Forecast Five. Forecast Five is a sister company to PMA. We found it easier to develop software from outside the S E C and Fender regulations that PMA Financial Network has scrutinized and has to follow. So this company started up about three years ago, we came out with other products, Five Site, Five Share, other platforms that districts are using around the country. And I worked with the forecast model, this is Five Cast, this came up last summer. It kind of been pulling back and pulling back until we got a good base of all our existing clients like Nacusa converted over to the network, but it runs out and it's just going crazy. We brought a sixteen new school that starts last week in Wisconsin. So it's like gatebar the door. So it's a lot different. The way that we're doing it this year is still pretty much the same as we did it in the past, where I work with Lynn and Terry as a, as a team, we collaborate on assumptions, look at what's happening at local and at the state level and develop assumptions, but I think just the experience Lynn has thus far is, is pretty similar to most districts that we don't need you messing with our forecast, we have access to it online. It's a database, it's all web-based, and what we're seeing is districts taking the reins and saying, it's our forecast and we'll take control of it. So with that, we'll just go through maybe. So very similar to our old model, it's a multi-year financial plan where you take, we're working with eleven years of data at all times, five years of history, current year budget, and going out five years. Very easy, especially this new model to do, what if scenarios, manage multiple scenarios. This guy's limited with the number of scenarios you can manage. One key difference with this model over the old model is that we're working with your general ledger data versus the data that your district reported to DPI. What is important is, a good example would be in the areas of salaries and benefits, it's right down to that specific object level, it even goes down to the building level, the functional level, whatever level of detail that the district is running your financial system now is in this system. So one of the key benefits, we're really going to be excited to see districts using, we've always had this budgeting process and long-range planning process going on in separate areas, and now the two can kind of be brought together because what we have in the model tonight could actually be brought right back into your Skyway system. And the model can be used for distribution and stakeholder, or report, distribution, stakeholder report, kind of what we're going to look at tonight, some of the reports. As I mentioned before, your general ledger data has been brought in from fiscal eleven well back five years, goes out through its current fiscal year budget. Most of the projections are based off the, off the ledger, but we do have calculators that lie behind the database, it takes your enrollment, converts it to membership, runs it through the aid and the revenue limit calculations, and binds or links those outputs right back to your general ledger. Most of the assumptions are done on percentage basis, the truth be told, in most districts we're holding a line, it's no increase, but we do adjust some in areas of expenditure by percentages. There's other areas that may include one-time adjustments or ongoing recurring adjustments. So we'll start out with enrollment and start by looking at resident in district enrollment. What I have here is just a little chart that displays the last five years in the district, and you can see we're projecting an ADA student decrease over the next five years. That's using a five-year cohort survival method, it simply looks at the historical trends grade by grade, first to second, second to third, and so forth. The key here is that we're projecting incoming four K and five K class sizes of fifty-five and seventy-three, that's the current class size for your residents in the district. So we do see that decreasing by ADA students over the next five years. If we look back over the last ten years, we've lost a hundred and six students in the last five and we're looking at another ADA. So the district, you've got a hundred and ninety-four students over the, over the most current historical ten years and out the five years. Our resident open enrollment, we have ninety students attending other districts under open enrollment tuition waiver. Our non-resident students coming to Nacusa, we have a hundred and three students, they have pill the last trick there. That fiscal year fourteen, we had seventy-nine students, we see that increase last year to ninety-seven students, we increased another six students to a hundred and three this year. So you guys are going the right direction, the trend is positive with the non-resident students coming into the district. On the revenue side, we're kind of in a nice spot right now because next year will be the second year of biennial budget, the state biennial budget, we're right in the middle right now, so we pretty much know for certain what we're going to receive for revenues next year. We know it's tied to our enrollment, and there's two per pupil components, one's a per pupil revenue limit increase, at Goose egg, we received that this year, we'll receive it next year. Zero on the per pupil revenue limit coin, past next year, the next two state biennial budgets, we've been conservative, but we didn't want to paint a blue and do them and say the state's not going to allow us anything, so we used a seventy-five dollar per student increase in subsequent years after next year. The per pupil categorical aid, relatively new, this is I believe the fourth year with this, next year that will go from one fifty to two fifty per student. So that's where we'll see our revenue increase just in that categorical aid. We've kept that amount at two fifty in the future years, it's just a new revenue source to do, to really know what the state's going to do. The big difference here in the per pupil categorical is the state pays one hundred percent of that, if we receive it on the revenue limit, the state shares with us roughly two-thirds on that. Equalization in your district went up just a tick, it was positive, it went up point one nine last year, last fall. We've used a conservative half percent per year growth for years, two, all five years going into the future. It's important to kind of measure yourself where you're at relative to the state average. The state average was two and a quarter, two point two four, and we've grown that by, it should say like, up to two point five percent next year, an additional quarter percent per year. This is just a general collective thinking, the districts throughout the state, and you know, like keeping ourselves flat at a half percent per year, it would suggest that we're losing ground to the state average, we're going to look less wealthy. That would help us on the aid formula, but when we start to go forward and look at what happens with our enrollment, we claim we have fewer kids to divide that value into, so our value per student goes up anyway, and we still come out on the wrong side of the aid formula. The state appropriation for general aid, you know, next year will be a hundred and eight million dollars compared to zero this year. And if we had stretched that seventy-five dollars per student now to the big, two biennial budgets, paying two-thirds of it, the state would put in about one percent per year, and that's, that's pretty reasonable with what they've done. An open enrollment tuition exists linked to your per pupil revenue limit increase. You're very close, you're on the positive side with that disproportionate number of incomes, so it's just still something we want to keep an eye on. On your expenditure side, salaries, benefits, salaries, we've kept our staffing flat per our base forecast, no changes. Salaries are consistent with the current compensation plans, so we actually went into the different areas and applied to different plans and said, what if, and applied those dollars and got what was in there. On the benefit side, the two key benefits, health insurance, dental insurance, five percent and two percent respectively, we'll put a note in here, this is the district's cost, you see more and more districts taking this approach that if health insurance goes up eight percent, you know, the district's a bit going to afford five, and we'll have to make some changes, whether it's sharing more on cost or plan design and so forth, or a combination of both. As I mentioned before, costs controlled by the district, when we talk about percentage increases, we've frozen those at current spending levels, utilities included in that area, some of the things you just talked about with your energy efficiency, we felt that was prudent to just keep those frozen at this point in time. And then also along those lines, your district insurance, your property, liability and so forth are frozen. So let's try or look at an Excel worksheet here. We don't need to spend a lot of time on this one here, this is a bit tricky here. This is just your, your revenue, revenue limit membership, and it's showing, let me try my mouse to decrease the size here. It's just showing our third Friday counts, what we had in that chart in the PowerPoint where we're looking at our projected enrollment declining by ADA students over the next five years. So kind of casting that forward, and we look at what's going to happen with our allowable revenue limit under current state formula. Does anybody have a PowerPoint?
It's a smart board, it keeps us real.
I learned something new every year.
Oh, thank you.
This is cool. So I was at a district Monday and they had like a seventy-inch TV, they had those touchscreen, and I thought that was pretty cool, but this is, this is nice. Now, now I know why they're smart boards. So the key here on your revenue limit is that overall, we see a slight increase next year, and that's, I guess it's kind of artificial because what we have happening is your energy efficiency exemption bumps up a little bit, so that, that is really anomaly, there's actually a decline in your overall revenue limit, but we can see that over the next four years after next year, we're seeing a decrease by year, and we can see how that declines from the current twelve point three seven five million down to eleven point seven five, really driven mostly by declining enrollment.
And the revenue limit is to remind her that's how much money we can raise through property taxes and state aid.
Correct. I was going to show one more slide here, that we don't really need to go into, it's just your general aid formula, and what it shows is that your declining enrollment really is driving your value per student up. What we see is a relatively flat aid over the next five years. Next year's kind of anomaly because we did spend more last year, and the more we spend inclusive negatively aided at the last dollars in that tertiary, we call the tertiary level, so we do lose some aid. Next year we'll lose more aid than in future years. That decline next year is about a half million dollars today to five hundred thousand aid, and then it stays relatively flat after that, so what it really comes down to is what is it going to cost the taxpayers? I love this thing. You can work for my office. So tax levy and mill rate analysis, what we're looking at, our current rate ten seventy-five because of that loss of state aid next year, you know, our total allowable revenue limit relatively flat, we see a slight increase, that accounts for the increase going to eleven twenty-one. The future years are really tied to our revenue limit decline, so we can see fairly flat with a slight decline. Now, if our value, we've been pretty conservative with a half percent, if we start to see that come back a little bit, obviously that will have a positive impact, could drive these rates down a little bit. We don't want to see it get too crazy with valuation because it follows up with, in the form of losing aid in the subsequent year. So the slide that we all want to get to is a projection summary. Kind of gets me, no, why would you do it there? Should be a little slider. Okay, I'm going to cross my fingers and just keep it right there. So we're beginning with our current fiscal year budget balanced, fourteen point one million dollars in revenues and expenditures. Our fund balance right now is at three point five million dollars, which represents twenty-five percent of our expenditures, very healthy, right in line with where we would expect and hope most districts would be. Fifteen percent is the minimum, do we have a fund balance policy here?
In order to alleviate short-term borrowing, but remember, we receive about seventy-seven percent, you know, seventy-three percent in taxes, so we get money in January, February, and August. We are only twenty-seven percent aided by the state, so that's why our percentage has to be higher because of the cash flow.
Right, if we would look at a district that's more positively aided, they would start to see their cash come in the first Friday, I believe it is, of December.
Yes.
That's their big aid payment, so their cash flow, they bought an extra forty-five days before their tax receipts come in. Because you're in the aid formula, where you're at in the aid formula, you're a little bit more stressed in that area, and so that justifies a little bit higher, but still, this is a reasonable fund balance, twenty-five percent. So next year, you can see our revenues go up a whopping thirty thousand dollars, from fourteen point one million dollars to fourteen point one three seven. Our expenditures go up about sixty thousand, so for all intents and purposes of the district, your size, your, your budget is balanced, we're showing a deficit here of thirty-four thousand. You know, there's still so many different assumptions and variables that Lynn will be working through as the budget, budget process develops. But where we really need to look out is when we get past next year into the next two biennial budgets, and we can see this trend with projected budget deficits, structural deficits, five hundred thousand, five hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred thousand, and if you stretch out, it's four hundred thirty thousand. So that's where we need to keep our eye on right now is not so much next year, but what's going to happen in the next two biennial budgets, so that this doesn't catch us by surprise. There's a lot that's going to happen at the state level, you know, we have more elections, we have the economy that's up in the air, who knows what this next state budget's going to look like. We've been fairly conservative, we can hope for more, but we want to be realistic too. So any questions, thoughts?
Great information, thank you.
You're welcome. My voice made it through.
Yeah.
The number, you probably wonder where my sidekick from last year was Nick, the intern I brought with, the kid that played football at Adam's Friendship and.
Yeah.
Made a couple snide comments. He's now a full-time accounting specialist down in Naperville. Our company hired him full-time over the summer, fun story.
Cool.
So during the process then, if, as, as we go along the budget process, if you have scenarios or that we need to map out, I can certainly, again, I'm new at this system, I can certainly talk to Scott and we can work those, through those scenarios together. It's not going to take days or weeks anymore, it's going to be a matter of hours. So it's a very fast process.
What if this happened or what if that happened?
Right, and the, you know, the more familiar I get with the software, the more familiar I can say, Scott, leave me alone, so.
I could say, Lynn, leave me alone.
Yeah.
You guys like Richard, love it, go ahead, go ahead.
So, I mean, the software is great, I just love it, so.
It's been the general consensus with all our clients this year, so it's been fun, a lot of work with a lot of fun.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Send some kids this way.
Send some kids this way. Wherever there's a surplus out there.
Well, I've worked hard all over the state, and other districts are finding the same challenge.
Thanks, Ian.
Richard, you're finally up. I'm sorry for the delay, I apologize, but you're going to give us some information and an update on a recent advance with the STEM Academy and the Governance Board.
Our advance this year was our third, I believe, as an organization, and we were fortunate to have almost all of our Governance Council present for the whole two days, evening on Wednesday through noon on Friday, and our, our staff of four educators, three and a half educators plus Clint.
Can I just point out that some of the companies that they work for, some did not, but companies like ERCO and Domtar have, have paid their employees to be there at that time? I just wanted to make that note.
Yes, we had, we've had great support from the community. Domtar was a rock star at, at the STEM event on, on Saturday, they had three or four guests of four people each at their booth, and Matt Fisher himself came out and manned the last, was part of that last cohort of excited, energized Domtar employees. So, yeah, we're, we're very, very fortunate for the kind of support that we get from, from the people that are involved in CWSA and the Governance Council. Thank you. Now, where was my mind? Get older, Ken, Ford does side trips. So, we had, we had a full body to begin deliberation on our strategic plan, to align it with the district's strategic plan, and we had Dr. Stephen Ripa from WISN to help facilitate those discussions. And Dr. Ripa has been involved with charter schools for a very long time, and has actually written some papers on some of the characteristics of the growth process of, of charter schools. So, it was very helpful to us to, to get some of that, that wisdom and experience in trying to understand our own process. We're now at the point where we, we really need a strategic plan to understand where we want to move forward to, and so the district's strategic plan was, was helpful to us. We have basically, part of what Dr. Ripa suggested to us is that we understand those forces that are holding us back, or restraining us in some way, and those forces that are helping to propel us forward, the good and the bad. And many times, the agents of those good and bad were exactly the same thing. Technology, for example, is a frequent agent of both the good, the bad, and sometimes the ugly, but we found, for example, in restraining forces that we don't have enough time to work with. Our, our staff need time to, to plan together effectively, and we've already addressed that. We have volunteers coming in one day a week when we can schedule the time to take over for our, our faculty so that they can plan together. We, we instituted what we call discovery days, and we have parent volunteers coming in to help for an hour, so that they have that time in the week. We have things like just trying to understand what's going on in the process of a project-based learning environment. Many of the things that we expected would be a little easier or a little harder. Our behavior management is, is much better this year, and we're, we're seeing gains there, but we still know that we need to do more. Project Foundry was one of the things that we, we implemented to a technology tool to help us manage projects so that students can see what objectives they're meeting, and that we can assign the work in a way that takes a little bit of the burden off of the educators and management, and also provides tools for us to provide better communication back to parents. So, all of that's helpful. Things like mindset, are we thinking about our process properly, or we delve deeply enough into the things that we need to accomplish? We looked at our, our facilitating factors, and we all feel very, very blessed to have a top-to-bottom positive environment, from the administration through the Board of Education and our, our building administration and, and our faculty and our Governance Council, we're all working together. And Steve Ripa from Mark, he said, "You don't know how lucky you are." It's like, we never find that in charter schools, that you have all those stars aligned for success. It's really quite amazing. So, we're, we're really pleased about that. We have, we have autonomy that helps us, and we have a very supportive business environment. We call Domtar or ERCO and ask for support, and we get it. It's not, well, maybe, it's, yeah, what can we do? This is, this is very, very positive. So, looking at all those things and, and the, the types of positive and negative forces that, I say positive or negative, restraining and, and motivating forces helps us to look at our strategic plan in a particular way and decide what we need to do. We came up with two goals. One was to work collaboratively, collaboratively to update the CWSA mission and vision. We feel that we need to own that and, and be able to use it as a tool to, to help us move forward. The, the second goal was to evolve the Governance Council from a founding to a sustaining council. And there are a number of things that we need to do. We don't have a guidebook on what it means to be a Governance Council member. You come in that door and we can't say, "Here's your job, these are the things we look for." We, we know that we need to develop that. We know that we need a better schedule of our activities as Governance Council, and we developed our, our calendar. That was one of the things that we did as Governance Council, developed a calendar for focus for each month in the coming year. Things like, this month, we're developing a survey, a parent survey, but as we talked about that particular activity, we realized we wanted a lot more information than what we got last year from our survey, and that was partially because of the nature of the questions and partially because we didn't get good response. Okay? It's kind of hard to put a survey out there and expect you're going to get a lot of people to, to respond. So, our Governance Council looked at each other and we said, "Okay, we're going to take this pull by the horns. Number one, we're going to design a survey so that it gives us the information that we need in cooperation with our, our faculty, so that they get useful information as well. We're going to administer it during the, the parent-teacher conferences." So, we have both the parent and the student with us, and it happens then, and the Governance Council will be the ones administering it. We'll come in and work with them, make sure that happens. And as we were talking, Amy was here earlier, as we were talking together, myself and Amy, we said, "You know, it'd be kind of cool if we could do a student survey that is sort of a mirror, but more specifically for a student, along with everyone, and then have them trade surveys and talk to each other about them." Because in that dialogue, we get something happening that doesn't happen often enough, and we also get very valuable additional information coming back to us that we can use to help guide our process and understand where we are. So, we're really excited about this, and we, we think that this is going to be a neat process that will give us a lot more information. The other thing that we know that we need to do is revisit the way that we report to the Board of Education on our successes, failures, and whatever in between. And I want very much to have a conversation with Nathan about what measures we have available and what additional measures we can put in place to help us understand what we're doing. The state gives us a mandate that we have to do X, Y, Z. We're doing in addition other assessments that are mostly summative, but we know that there's more that we can do. Maybe there's some assessments of stress or motivation, engagement that we can employ that would help us to understand whether we're doing what we really want to do for the students at CWSA, which is engage them in a positive way. And that's basically what we focused on for, for our advance, and so we've got a lot more work to do, but we made some progress. Any questions that you have?
I don't have a question, but that survey idea with the parents at the student-teacher conferences, if that works, I'd like to hear about that, the outcome of that, because if that works, that sounds like an idea that we could...
Do it in other places.
Yes. I, I don't think it's ever been done before, and, and if it works, it's worth a paper, I think, probably to one of the journals.
Absolutely.
Right? Well, stay in touch, you can, you can offer it for us.
Looks like you're on the right track.
I think Nathan gets excited about that kind of stuff.
In the summer, I do.
Thank you so much, Richard, for your work, and Clint, I'm glad that you guys had a good advance. Sounds like it was...
Did I forget anything, Clint? Uh, no. I, we, we, we took that, the plan on the page and, and dug into that a little bit and described it, because our Governance Council hasn't worked with that, that document yet, and so we engage ourselves in, in that work. And we have a mission and vision and a strategic plan, but it's a founding mission and vision and strategic plan, and like Richard said, we need to move into sustaining. And also, Dr. Ripa, I asked if he would be willing to present that, if it's really a flow chart to the board so that you guys can get some of that same information, and he has agreed, we just need to organize that and set that up.
Good. Thank you.
I have a comment, question. With this charter school, with the Nacuzaro Charter School and the school district, is there any collaboration? Some of the pains I'm hearing you announce here totally happened.
I looked at you and I thought, I can't remember working with you.
Why are we not bouncing off what's already there instead of continuing the pains with struggling on your own? My suggestion would be to...
Which pains specifically?
Well, your, your, your building, the foundation, the mission, the vision, how do you go forward? Granted, it's very specific to your school, there's a specific to their school, but those growing pains as a new school in a district that you're applying, how do you report? What's working for them? And using your resources, like Dr. Ripa, maybe that's a growth or a mini-training module for both Governance Boards to be on the same track that you might have some tips that they're not using either. This, this might be something to mirror or to just bounce ideas off of, just a quick little polo with their board.
I'd like to address half of it. I, I think we'd like to collaborate more, and I personally have been involved in some outreach at least to Nacuzaro. The, the difficult part for Governance Council, though, is it, it goes through stages that are directed by the ignorance of the people, and you can't, part of it, you can't, you can't supplement that growth by somebody else doing it for you, you kind of have to go through it yourself. It doesn't mean you shouldn't ask.
But we still can be more deliberate.
We can be more deliberate in our, in our sharing, I suppose.
Well, and, and not that you need from them what they need from you, but there's, there's very similar pains, growing pains. I don't know how else to describe it unless...
No, you're, you're exactly right, Eric, and I was looking at you and I was thinking, thank you for speaking up. So, you know, I guess one of the things in terms of partnerships is that, you know, beyond the Governance Board, we're looking for, you know, what other opportunities can the, because really, the mission is very similar between the two schools in terms of being project-based and really having that emphasis on there. So, we're looking at what ways we can partnership, and we've had a few discussions within our Governance Board already, and Clint and I have had some discussions already, too, but we really haven't gotten to the point of getting together as groups and where we're at right now and where there could be a deeper partnership.
We've got some ideas, though. What you shared too helps.
All right. So, yes, certainly.
Just an idea. That's a, yeah.
But we've been, it's been in our heads, Joe.
I was looking to see if Kristen was here because she's, she's been supportive with Project Foundry.
Well, even when Project Foundry first came up, it was, how did it work? How do we apply? How do we get out of ABC hours one, two, three? Now you have project, and you have your core curriculum, and you have your standards, and then getting the students to understand, getting the parents to understand. There's a lot of education that had to happen just at home, as a parent, trying to read that, understanding it, how do I help my student as a parent? And then on the education side of it, how do we educate parents? How do we educate students? How do we apply it so that we're still meeting the goals by the end of the year, so everybody can still progress? So, that was a growing pain in the mix of things. And then even now, there's been tweaking since the implementation of Project Foundry through the school and how the reporting structure has come out so that it's easier to be able to explain without taking it away and still applying it. So, I think there's some definite information and collaboration that could be done and still keep everything absolutely separate, but still be able to help both grow.
Sure. Now, we're, we try to stay open to the whole community.
The separate thing is what bothers me a bit. So, we want to talk about that, too. How can we do more mixing up so that people, so that all the kids can learn from each other?
Yeah, one, one of the things that we, we identified from the very beginning that separates a charter school from the district is this recognitionally our difference. And that, that difference can be good, or it can, it can have negative side effects. And trying to share our difference in a way that supports collaboration throughout the district...
And diversity.
And diversity is a challenge, and, and we share that with Nacuzaro.
And it's not, you know, something that was asked at a board meeting was, hey, do you, when we first started talking about CWSA and stuff, and, and one of the board members asked, "Do you see this going throughout the whole middle school?" And the answer is no, because it's not best for everybody. It's, it's better for certain students, and we have to honor that. And it's not a better school, they're not a, AMS is not a better school, it's just a different opportunity, and that's okay. So, and I think John, you know, introduced that when CWSA was coming into the fold as, you know, a split screen, and we dove more into that philosophical belief more over the advance, too, with Dr. Ripa.
Thank you, guys.
Same thing applies with Nacuzaro.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good conversation.
Thank you. Good stuff.
Any questions? Otherwise, we'll move on. Okay. Next on the agenda is the school forest timber sale update. You must take me there.
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you very much.
I could talk to the sale. In your packet, there was the...
In your packet, there was the actual estimate for the sale and the actual sale that we received. The estimated sale was seventeen thousand nine nineteen fifty, and we actually netted twenty-four thousand forty-one dollars and ten cents, which is an additional six thousand one twenty-one sixty. All of that goes right back into the School Forest. So, it's a separate fund. I mean, we have to keep it separate from the operational because it belongs to the School Forest, so that's all I know.
So, they'll be used for improvements out there?
Mm-hmm.
Very nice.
Yeah. It's cool. I don't know anything else about it, though.
So, and the board knows that we received a five-thousand-dollar grant? So, that's going to be, we're actually, Nathan and I are having some conversations about who might lead that. And then, Brian certainly has been taking an active role in that as well. There's still some pulp out there that we're waiting to have picked up, and we can't do anything on the property until that's off. So, I don't know, Brian, did you have anything else to add to that?
Nope. That's just really what our last direction was, is that, you know, we couldn't do anything on the property until that timber went off.
But I know CWSA may be going out there this week, actually, on a field study and meeting up with Gretchen from UW Stevens Point and really taking a look at, having some beginning conversations about mapping that out so that we can get the trails put in. So, watch for more on that. But thank you, Lynn, for your work on gathering this. It's exciting to have an additional six thousand dollars.
I just collect the checks.
Lynn, I think the next item is yours as well.
Yes.
The second Friday, the January membership count.
Yep. As a reminder, the school districts in the state of Wisconsin are required to have two counts a year, third Friday of September, second Friday of January. Third Friday of September, that count is used for the revenue limit worksheet and the state aid formula. The January count is only used for the state aid formula. So, the September count is far more important than the January count because the January count uses both, for the state aid formula, it uses both the September and the January. So, September is far more important, but we are required to do the January count, too. If we don't get our counts into DPI by a specific date, it's an automatic audit. So, you can make darn sure that I got my figures in before that date happened. So, as a reminder, I'm going to put all this on the board because I think the last time I presented, I did have it, and it was very difficult for people to follow. So, the first thing that we're going to talk about is what, there's several definitions, several pieces to counts. The first one is enrollment. Those are students that are actually in our seats, and we usually, that, we usually use that number to budget for our staffing or to plan staffing for the following year. We take the enrollment figure and we convert it into membership. And membership is basically the enrollment minus the students that don't live in the district but are attending, the non-residents, which Scott talked about prior, and plus all the students that live in our district but are attending schools elsewhere, the ones that are transferring out. We take that membership and we convert it to full-time equivalencies, and that's provided by the Department of Public Instruction. Typically, 4K is a point-six full-time equivalency, and all the rest of the grades are a one. Then, I'm going to take a look at the tables. Now, the first table I have is going to be a comparison from the September, the third Friday in September, to the second Friday in January. And we will start with Table 1. In September, you can see that it's broken out by grade, and this is enrollment. These are kids in our seats. Back in September, we had one thousand two thirty-one. In January, there's a four-student drop to one thousand two twenty-seven, which is not that bad. I mean, I was, I was kind of expecting that, so it was a pleasant surprise. We go over to Table 2, and we bring those enrollment figures up, and we add in all of our students that are attending elsewhere. We subtract all the students that are attending here that are, that are residents of other districts, and we come up with our total membership. In September 2015, we had one thousand two oh two. In January, a slight drop of five, one thousand one ninety-seven. We then go to Table 3, and we convert that membership into full-time equivalencies. And the full-time equivalencies is used for the revenue limit worksheet and the state aid formula. So, as you can see, the preschool and the four-year-old kindergarten, preschool is point-five. I forgot to mention that before. Preschool, we convert a point-five factor, so actually, the six students that we have are converted to a three FTE. The 4K, the sixty-three that we have are converted to thirty-eight, and the seventy-seven and one thousand fifty-one remain the same. So, the total membership from September is one thousand one seventy-four. In January, it was one thousand one sixty-nine, a six FTE drop. I'm also going to show you a comparison from the January counts. And this is January 2015 to January 2016. So, it's exactly one year ago. And as you can see, the differences are a little bit more dramatic. The kids in seats dropped by thirty-nine. Our, our membership dropped by forty-nine, and our FTEs dropped by fifty. So, when we talk about declining enrollment, this is it. And this affects how much we are allowed to raise in taxes and state aid, and it also affects staffing. So, any questions? So, our goal is to, is to increase enrollment. That is the only way that we are going to raise more money or get a bigger piece of I can really bring down a house, can't I?
Really? Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Very straightforward, isn't it?
Is there something to chew on right there?
Yep.
Okay, next on the agenda, thank you, Lynn.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is approval of designated recipient of the Wisconsin Academic Scholarship.
All right. As we know, I'm going to just read this memo. Wisconsin's Academic Excellence Scholarship is a state-supported program jointly administered by Department of Public Instruction and Higher Education AIDS Board. The program offers scholarship recipients an exemption of two thousand two hundred fifty dollars per year for tuition for post-high school education at eligible higher education institutions in Wisconsin. Based on enrollment, the Nacusa School District will receive one scholarship. By February 25th of each year, the school board will designate the appropriate number of seniors from the high school with the highest grade point average in all subjects as scholars eligible to receive an Academic Excellence Scholarship. Kaylee Jensen, Kaylee Jensen, Nacusa High School's first qualifier of the Academic Excellence Scholarship, is planning to attend Winona State University and is therefore not eligible for the scholarship. Administration recommends the Board of Ed approve the first alternate Connor Favor as the recipient of the Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship for the 2015-16 school year. Connor plans to attend UW-Madison. So, we're looking for an approval, but congratulations, Kaylee, to you.
Yes, congratulations.
So, this is the, how many years has this been happening, Mr. Con? Three years?
Yeah. You know, I touched back on the declining enrollment piece. Remember at one point in time when we had two of those?
Oh, wow.
And at one time, it was for more money as well, wasn't it?
I don't know, I don't know on the dollar bond. I think you're right, but I haven't called that for sure. But like the second or third year I was at the high school, we dropped below five hundred students, and they put us down to the one.
Okay. All right.
Okay. I made a motion to accept that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor for Connor Favor as a recipient of the Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship for 2015-16, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Congratulations, both Kaylee and Connor.
Yes.
I would have liked to see Kaylee get it.
Yeah. She's got her...
What would you be stuck in at Winona State?
Biology, LA Health.
Very nice. And what is your dream for the future job, career?
Of some sort.
In Nacusa at the clinic.
Perhaps she'll come back.
Yes.
Well, here he is. Backyard. Next on the agenda is field trip approval for the chess tournament in Atlanta, Georgia on March 31st through April 4th.
And we could have Mr. Rzeszowski talk more about that, but it's exciting. They've done really well at the national competition, so we're looking for approval on that?
Yes, we are. Everybody, does anybody have any questions? No?
Make a motion to accept that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept the submission from Mr. Rzeszowski for the trip. And we have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Very, very good. And let's see, I think we're two donations.
Yes. Can we read those?
Yes, please.
Lynette Hilgers and friends donated, or Lynette Hilgers and friends donated a bag of hats, scarves, and mittens to AMS. Kim Becker donated hats and mittens to AMS, and several boxes of food and two-hundred-and-five dollars from Sacred Heart for the Backpack for Kids program.
Okay, we're looking for a motion and a second to accept the donations as accepted.
So, move to second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Gentlemen, you are out, provided the consent agenda in minutes, treasurer's report, and the check register for the January meeting. I'm looking for a motion to accept those as presented.
So...
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Lynn, you have a short budget update?
It's in the packet. You can read at your leisure and email me questions.
Okay, there we go. Then, I think we're going to move back up to administrative reports.
Yes, who would like to start?
I could start. The school year, we've been working on three school initiatives that stemmed from our work that we've done last spring as a board and as an administrative team and Senator on our strategic plan and our plan on the page, and they're focused on our social, implementing our social-emotional plan, working on developing our intervention system, and then also integrated services where we focused on a co-teaching model. I'm going to just highlight a little bit of that one right now, and that's the co-teaching piece right now. This past week, Peggy Black came into our building and she did some coaching with the teams of teachers. As you may have recalled, we had Ms. Courtney Baron come on staff here at the beginning of the semester right now, and my plan was to have really develop that co-teaching model. And again, the co-teaching is where we're having, it's an inclusion-based system in which we have kids with IEPs in the classroom. And then, really, right now, what we're, Peggy's helping us is to help those teachers learn how to reach the kids who are on the edge right now and developing strategy. So, we were using Peggy in that capacity to bring all our kids forward right now. So, that's an, that's an update from AMS.
Thank you, Joe. I give the update from Hunkie. We are, well, we finished up all of our PALS, which is the K through, pre-K through grade two reading assessment. And it's really exciting, though, as we're working at reviewing SLOs, the Student Learning Objectives. And one, the kindergarten team is a team that, when we were doing data analysis at the beginning of the year, first grade had a number of students who were identified and IDed means that they didn't meet a benchmark on the PALS assessment. A number of students who were IDed in first grade who had not been IDed in spring of their kindergarten year. But what we found as we dug through the PALS data was that those students, though, had missed the benchmark on a particular part of the PALS assessment in kindergarten. It's called concept of word. Almost, in fact, every single one of the students IDed in first grade had missed the benchmark on the concept of word at the end of kindergarten. Now, I didn't mean they were IDed in kindergarten because there are other pieces that may have pushed them up over that, that benchmark score. So, this year, the kindergarten team's SLO is focused on concept of word, and so I'll be excited to see what happens next year. They've been very deliberate in working with concept of words, things such as, I mean, there's reading word lists, out-of-context reading word lists. There is one-to-one correspondence. There's also left-right orientation, different things of that sort that are in that concept of word. But, but that's been part of what we've been doing in the building is certainly going through and looking at SLOs, making adjustments, seeing where things are at. The first grade team as well has had some fantastic success, you know, with their benchmark assessment, which is a running record. And a running record is where a student reads to the teacher, and as the teach, as a student is reading, the teacher is listening and marking any errors or omissions, words that are skipped, corrections, different things like that to get an idea of where that student is in terms of reading level. And then, that's used for the guided reading groups. We also have, on a different note, we have the book fair coming up, February 16th through the 19th. In fact, Scholastic told us this morning at about nine o'clock that the books are on the way today. So, if you go out, you'll see the cases are on the wall in the hallway, right out here on the side, waiting for the book fair next week. So, we're excited about that. And then, we also have parent-teacher conferences coming up on the 18th, which is more of a, there are some scheduled conferences and more of an open house. And actually, that night, we'll have the book fair open, we'll have candy bar bingo going on, and we'll have parent-teacher conferences all, all in the building. So, we'll have a busy night with...
So, bring your candy bar and come play bingo, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all it takes?
All it takes is one candy bar. You get a bingo, you get a candy bar, you get to choose a different one. So, but, and tomorrow, we have the lion's fish fry going on here in the kitchen. So, be sure to buy your tickets. You'll be able to smell it as soon as you walk in.
Diana just mentioned something that could really work well. Why don't you share that, Diana?
Well, I'm just thinking that open house might be a good night for the board to be available for listening.
Oh.
Have some conversations with folks.
Yeah.
What's, what night is that?
February 18th. And then, that will be four, four to six are conferences, and then, six to seven is the bingo. The book fair is open from about four to six thirty. If you're interested in working at the book fair, they would love to help with that, so...
Got the whole deal, haven't they?
That's right.
Right here at Hunkie.
So, there we go.
Commissioner, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Con?
All right. We two at the high school have been using the services of Peggy Black. Peggy was actually in our school yesterday. She got snowed out last week when she was supposed to be here on Tuesday. She, she was with, she worked yesterday with our English Language Arts and Math co-teaching teams to begin to develop unit and lesson planning specifically to that, that co-teaching model, which is, you know, part of our adult learning plan under the co-teaching piece, focused on that. We've also had a fair amount of professional development taking place in our other core areas, and I know Nathan's going to touch on that, so I won't go into that too far. Just a reminder, February 29th, that's Monday, that's the Tony Evers visit. Dr. Evers will be at the high school from 10:30 until, until noon, so we're ramping up for that. The planning for that is pretty close to being done. We'll have a fair amount of people from various stakeholders in the district, you know, representing business, representing higher education and so forth there that day to also take in on the visit. I'm hoping that our course description book, I mentioned this previous, you know, the last time we were together, I'm hoping that that doesn't have to wait until the March regular meeting. I don't know if you'll be having any meetings, special meetings in February, but to do it well, it wasn't ready to do tonight because we're just, we just received some new data today on some of the... received some new data today on some of the career planning stuff. So Diana, if soon and if you know that there's going to be a special meeting in February, if you'd let me know.
So it really should happen in February?
If possible. We like, in the first week of March, we'd like to start rolling the information out to the high school students, and the second week of March, the middle, you know, to the eighth grade. So that would, that would be great if that could happen.
Sure.
Last summer, administrative team and others, as you're aware, attended the ALIS training. We implemented the ALIS procedures into our school crisis planning. And to date, we have, we've drilled, we've had a successful lockdown drill implementing the ALIS protocol, both at the high school and the middle school. And it's in the, it's in the works to happen here at the elementary school. Elementary teachers are well aware of the protocol, but as far as drilling in, of course, it's the younger, the older you get, it's a different monster to roll out. So that, like I say, both, both our drills at the middle school and the high school were successful. We debriefed with the high school staff last Wednesday after we had that drill. They came up with questions, comments, concerns that they had, and we took all those questions, comments, concerns, and addressed all of them. There were several common themes, but worked through those. And of course, we'll, we'll end up drilling again before the end of the school year. On February 17th, approximately 15 of our ninth and 10th graders are going to be going on a, on what's called IT Connections Tour. In the past, you've probably heard of the Heavy Metal Bus Tour. Well, this one's related to IT, and they will be touring Skyward in Stevens Point, Century Insurance, and Midstate Tech in Point. As part of that IT tour, it involves freshmen sophomores from the, from the local school districts.
So we got a pretty good-sized group?
I think it's 15, 14 or 15. So, yeah. Something that is going to be, is going to become a topic of discussion sooner than later in our school planning team is addressing the top end of our attendance procedures, meaning attendance procedures for seniors. Compulsory attendance laws cover, cover seniors up to the term in which they turn 18. Some of our seniors, right now, turned 18 in the first semester, and basically compulsory school attendance laws don't hit them as far as truancy and us having any way that we can curb, for lack of better words, senioritis. We are one of a few schools that don't have language in our, and it will take board policy change, but we'll work through that. We don't have language in our board policy that specifically deals with seniors. I met today with the other cell center principals, and this was a topic that we talked about, and I have all of their plans, how they deal with senior attendance issues, everything from very, very strict attendance to, you know, including not being able to participate in graduation, to just an in-house continuation of, you know, what we're, what we're able to do right now. But until that time that students turn 18, or you know, that they're governed under that, we have things we can do with, you know, with truancy citations and so forth, but after that, we don't. So that'll be, that'll be a discussion, several discussions in upcoming school planning, committee meetings, and then, of course, we'll bring it to the board for recommendation. Our, our school planning team is also going to be addressing our professional development plan for the remainder of this year and professional development plan for next year. And last on my list, we had a really awesome meeting with the folks from Domtar, actually last Tuesday on, on the snow day, and have rekindled some of the, some of the possibilities as it relates to our students getting connected with various career pathways as might exist with Domtar. And we've, we're going to meet again, I'm thinking we're going to meet again in February, in March, very early March, continue that process.
That was a really good, good meeting.
That's all I have. Nathan?
Right.
Oh, I just heard one thing. The approval for the coursebook, when will the coursebook be done? I'm just trying to gauge when we have to have another meeting to approve it?
It's really close to being done right now. If you told me you were having a meeting next week, could make it happen?
What would be best, though, Mike, to really make it?
I would say, you know, if, if we can have it approved by, by the end of February, we'll be in good shape.
Okay. That last week, we could have a workshop, tie in Library Media Specialist presentation as well.
Right.
Two main areas to touch on. First of all, as Mike alluded to, we've been doing a lot of work, call it professional development, but really a lot of work around the idea of content area standards across various content areas district-wide. Particularly in the last month, we've been working with social studies and science areas. Social studies, we had our second meeting with, working with teachers, grades four through 12, to be able to get some idea of articulated social studies curriculum, not just who's teaching what, but think in terms of if we're going to be offering something such as AP US History, what are the essential skills that students need to develop, and not just them. Where does that, what does eighth grade do to set that up? What does fourth grade do to set up eighth grade? And those type of, not just, here's what's everybody teaching, but what are the things that we need them to learn, and then get an idea of developing that together. And those type of meetings, as we had an informal check the last time one of those meetings was held in the district, at least in social studies, was on the order around 12 years ago. And being able to pull that together, and specifically in terms of, you know, how does this meet our, now that we have a common core, makes for some interesting other overlaps with it. Again, we'll say, hey, that's great for social studies, but really what this is great for kids overall, is that, you know, as we're diving into it, there are certain skills that are used in social studies, science, really all the core areas, relating to literacy, relating to reading, relating to writing, that are identical, and not just complementary, identical to the ones that are being done in English Language Arts, for example. And so if we come across situations where we've got some students in a given grade area who are struggling at developing reading proficiency or those type of areas, the answer's not just to go ahead and say, okay, English teacher's what you got. It's to, okay, how does this, how are we working on those skills that we need in social studies as well, in science, and being able to bring, help students learn the core skills they're looking for in multiple contexts, and which is more accessible for students. They can get, see it presented multiple ways. So what we're doing is we're setting ourselves up to be able to help have a, include not just within the social studies areas for stu, and science. I'm using the social studies initially because they had the most recent meeting. Our next fourth, our first 412 meeting with science is next week. But to be able to build these chains of developing proficiency and ways to be able to help both vertically and horizontally, to be able to support students wherever they're at. And so that's really been a, we're ongoing with this process and initiating this particularly in a structured manner with, with English Language Arts and with math, and that's going to be continuing on. Expect some more updates on that next month. But that is one of our big initiatives this year with each of the teacher teams, to really dive deeply into the standards, identify that rigor, and find ways to be able to help each other out in making sure the students are getting a connected experience. So that would be the first area. One additional one is that we, we finally heard last week from, back in December, I got together with curriculum directors from three other districts, and we formed consortium for what's known as the Peer Mentor and Review Grant, Peer Review and Mentor Grant. This is, the state of Wisconsin offers these to support teachers in their first three years of learning and in new to the profession. And one of the things that, however, the way that they changed it, they, however, they only, DPI awards grants to consortia of districts. Last year, they did CESS 5 generally, which we're a part of, but this time, we had a farmer-owned consortia. And we joined together with Wisconsin Dells, Reedsburg, and Mossen to be able to find ways to support our students. And upshot of this, we got the grant, but that's a $25,000 grant, split four ways, and so that translates to $7,000 for us, $6,000 for being part of it, but also another, we're the fiscal agent to be able to manage the areas. But just to note how that is helpful to us, not only is it helpful for, within the consortium, for exchanging ideas and support. For example, starting last month, we started our round of monthly support meetings for all students, for all teachers who are, for example, doing state certification with PDPs. But, and that is a model we borrowed from Reedsburg, in which you're just a, one, how do we support student teachers who are learning how to work with artifacts, how to represent themselves? This fits for educator effectiveness, state PI 34 model, but also, in our particular context, the moving up, or the state, our district compensation model. We're asking teachers to go ahead and present themselves in ways that are analogous to the other ones. And so we're giving, now that we're starting up our next round of, of this support for our, on our compensation model, we've already got a support that's in place to be able to help, help them along the way. So we borrowed and helped ideas back and forth to find ways to support that. But one of the things that I find particularly exciting is that, as we worked on it, let's say that we've got a, I don't see this, we don't necessarily see any on the horizon, but we have a number of teachers, especially in small districts, who are, the phrase we often use is singletons. For example, there's no other business education teacher in district. We don't have any other instrumental band teacher in district, in those type of areas. And between, and that is also a similar situation shared by these other districts. And so as we're looking, in addition to providing in-district mentor support for these teachers, we would also start, if we find, in any of the groups, if we identify, hey, we've got a new teacher who's coming into one of these areas that we can't locally support as well, reach out to the other districts to be able to help find someone in that subject area to be able to support them and work alongside them for those areas. And for example, if anyone, if the flag ever goes up to, hey, we've got a new business education teacher, you know, I've got, I can point at one of the best in the, in the business that we've got here in district, to be able to work alongside them and bring them up to case, and we'd be able to receive similar support in turn. So we're going, certainly, we're grateful for the money. We're grateful to ways to be able to support those initiatives. But a lot of, one of the big gains we're seeing from it is ways to be able to really pool our resources in, between districts, to be able to meet needs, not just creatively, but intelligently, to be able to, really, we're not, we're not competitors, even though a couple of them are in our same, as much as we're on the athletic fields, we're against each other, but it's really working well together as we're coordinating.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thanks, Sharon.
I have a quick question. You brought up two points, one of which was the, the first one was the curricular standards?
Yes.
And working grade to grade and building support forward. Is that information overlapping with the charter schools as well?
Yes. As a matter of fact, we're working closely with the charter school teachers about, because they are, it's the same standards.
Right.
And it's the same access areas to it, that they're working to go ahead and support. And so we, as we're doing this unpacking process, as we're deeming it, we're creating, not just, we meet together as, on a bi-weekly basis, from each subject area, who's talking together how we're learning and going through this process. And we have members, and like Kristen is a member of that group, and sharing out, and she's certainly helping support, but also sharing and learning what the others are doing too.
Great.
And so this is a, we have to do it together.
Great. The second point you brought up in regards to the consortium and the multiple school districts, it's kind of overlaps with you, Mr. Cum, as well, but with the loss of Hope Smith as the language teacher for Ho-Chunk language at the high school for credit this semester, Wisconsin Dells and Mossen particularly have high counts in Ho-Chunk youth, students in their school districts. They also have language in their districts as well. That might be something forward, and I'm really hoping this is going to be able to come back in, in short order. But the conversation regarding the potential of like a video conferencing teacher classroom setup, that they already have an in-class teacher, can we connect in? I don't know if the times are going to overlap something or other, but that might be something to also consider with the Black River Falls School District. I believe they have language in their high school as well. And I want to say Tomo might even have it in their middle school. So there's other districts that are somewhat local within the Ho-Chunk map of students and all the school districts we overlap with, that the Ho-Chunk Nation Department of Education is already working with, in addition to the Ho-Chunk Nation Language Division. We're struggling in this area specifically with elders that are able to be able to come in and have the fluency to be able to provide in this area. Definitely an option, I would hope, to be able to bring back or offer some options, or, you know, do we need a connection or something somewhere in there?
Yes, and being able to provide support for those. It's, in certain areas of the actual providing direct instruction, we have to negotiate about where's the teacher failing one here. But if we're in the situation again, as we're, if we bring one back, then that's when it goes on, how do we support? And I know there's, we can do a certain amount in district, like I'm a German teacher also, and we work with language skills, but there's only so much you can do. And to be able to put whoever that teacher would be in contact with, okay, here's our local, this is a perfect example, you know, we can provide some local mentoring, but there's only so much we can do for that actual language to be able to start matching that up. And that might be on a regular basis, visit at least every other month, or however else, to be able to just coordinate with Ho-Chunk specific issues. So we look forward to those areas. But the trick right now is providing that initial teacher and the model that works on that.
Right. I know that CHAG has also recently implemented what they're calling the Ho-Chunk Academy, and it's language in the work sites for employees in the workforce as well, that they have a curriculum that's based there also, that still goes back to what they start at Head Start. Everybody starts at the Head Start level, and it comes all the way through. I was so excited to hear it was going to be at the high school, and then I was heartbroken it was going this semester. But she needs a new hip, so we'd love to help, Hope.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. All right. And I just wanted to add, we had an emergency on the bridge today, and it happened right at the first dismissal, and the schools did a fantastic job with the bus company in responding appropriately and getting all our kids home safe. So thank you for your work on that. And also, I wanted to just put out a hip, hip parade to the hard work that's going on out there right now with Peggy Black's visits and really challenging our teachers, you know, and asking and having the hard conversations about how do we respond differently to meet those kids at the edges and really support that diverse learner in each and every classroom. So thank you guys for your work on that, Charlie. Thank you.
Yeah, I could jump in a couple things.
Sure.
You heard about the training happening at AMS in the high school with Mrs. Black, and it's a very practical approach, where teachers have the opportunity to take their actual lessons and apply it to students with IEPs and speak directly to their need and their disability with their content. So it makes it very practical. We spent the morning of our snow day, the admin team, learning about learning walks and kind of instructional rounds, what administration should look for when they, when they go and do a walkthrough in a co-taught setting. What do we want to hear? What is, what do we want to see? Those kind of things. So we put all of our thoughts together to kind of produce our own template and make it our very own. Also, last time I mentioned the virtual speech, we're having a parent night. You can participate by webinar or come to AMS at 6 o'clock next week, Monday. If those, we're offered to come to AMS for those who do not have internet access. Otherwise, it's going to be a virtual experience where they can actually see, go through the lesson and learn about the programming. Also coming up is the Project Search interviews. So last year, we started Project Search with Rapids, where our 18 to 21-year-olds had an opportunity to go and get some, some job experience at the hospital. And we had 12 to 14 students recently went from the high school to see what that was all about and learn more with Ellen Frye and Mrs. Kay. And then we have the interviews coming up here shortly. I don't have the exact date, but
Man, that's been a year.
I know. So hopefully, we'll have some good participants from the Kusatna.
Awesome. Thank you.
Terry, did you want to mention the spaceship?
Oh, yes. So you know how every year, we go down to the school board convention, and in the back of the exhibit hall is the bus? And I happened to go back there and drum up a conversation. Of course, I registered to win a free day.
Of course.
Yes? And we didn't win, yet we still are getting a free day. So I must have really talked nicely to the folks. And they are coming up on March...
Monday, March 14.
And they're going to spend the day here. So we're right now working to organize AMS and CWSA and the Kusarai. Everybody's going to have access to the spaceship. So... So if you're interested in participating, certainly we'll get you a schedule, all right? We, make sure we have a special, some kind of a special moon landing lunch or something.
So did they tell you before you left?
No. They called me a lunar lunch. You need a lunar lunch. Nice, nice. So that's exciting, thanks for sharing that. But you know how they, actually, Wayne-
Yes.
Was, I mean, and they even reminded me of that. Yeah, that little guy, that little board member of yours, I see, and he's recently, he's passed, so. Maybe that, maybe, maybe he's helping out here. So, yeah, so it was interesting to get that call.
So as long as you mentioned the convention, I wanted to bring up one thing. The main reason for this convention is to convene the school districts to discuss resolutions that the WASB would bring before the legislature. And there were 16 resolutions, I went through all of them, but one that was in particular interest was that they voted to pass a resolution that would not require school districts to post school board meetings in the newspapers. With the technology age that we're in, they saw, thought it would be wise to go with requirements for technology notification rather than the newspapers. Many of the school districts that commented about that resolution said that they don't even have a newspaper in their area, or it isn't a regular weekly newspaper, so they, they are struggling with that requirement as it is. In Milwaukee School District, they have the State Journal, and they don't even publish their school board activities. So it's, it was difficult to meet that requirement, so they're going to try to lobby the legislature to get us to be able to notify the public by technology instead of the newspaper. So I thought you might be interested in that.
One item on the agenda that we always talk about is future agenda items, and we have several items on there. We already mentioned the course description book, and we've got the library media specialist staff presentation, approval of youth options, approval applications, the CSE5 contract, the CWSA contract, technical excellence scholarship recipient, and the school planning team, PLC council on there right now. Is there anything else that we need to add for future agenda items? You know what we could do? I don't have anything to add, but we could take the school planning team, the library media specialist, and the course description book to that-
Workshop.
Yep.
To do a workshop then at the month.
And just really wrap it up into a nice little hour.
Do we want, do you guys want to get a date today for that? Yes, no, maybe so? Does anybody want to throw out a date?
And then while we're getting our calendars, we have our dear student board member over here that probably has a few things that she'd like to share.
We're working on wrapping up our musical. We're getting off script next week.
Off script?
Next week, we're going to off script, performing March 11th, 12th, 13th. Basketball's wrapping up. And next week, we're having Winter Fest, it's like a spirit week, having a dance in the front.
Nice. Are the board members invited to the dance?
No, because you're over 21. No, it's true.
They can chaperones? They might want to be interested in chaperoning.
We'll see.
We'll see. The invite will be in the mail.
Yeah.
She forgot to tell you it's a non-chaperoned dance.
All right, we're looking at a, a date for another workshop near the end of the month. The week of the 22nd to the 26th, I assume? Perfect. 23rd.
23rd.
Tuesday, the 23rd?
That looks good.
That looks really good.
Tuesday, 23rd, Brian?
6:30.
6:30? All right.
Mr. Whitmore, I would not be there. I have the Pinewood Derby.
So that probably, I mean, you certainly could gear your school planning team or PLC team.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, probably.
How's the board feel about that?
That's fine. You gotta go to the Pinewood Derby.
That's right.
You gotta go to the Pinewood Derby.
Tuesday, 23rd at 6:30? What are the topics of that, then? The course description book, the library media?
And school planning team PLC update.
Okay.
So we'll talk about what that could look like. Maybe a building can highlight, you know, we want to kind of put it into an hour, don't you think, board?
Yes.
23rd. One hour.
Is it a tear cover or a normal hour?
Are you going to be our timekeeper? Mr. Mahoney, you going to be our timekeeper?
If it comes to that.
Post, post the handbook on, on Google.
Yes, can we get that handbook out so the board can see it well in advance? And it should go to-
We can advance?
Sure, that'd be great, thank you.
Awesome.
Okay, if nothing else, I think we're at the part of the agenda where we're looking for adjourn.
We've got people yawning, so I think we should-
Okay, we have a motion, and I'll second it to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried, and we are adjourned.